Good evening and welcome to Neighborhood.
Good evening, welcome to Neighborhood Board 14. There's a couple administrative announcements. First of all, if you are going to speak, please come up to the mic. And secondly, if you have a cellphone, please turn it off. All right, first of all, we have to establish, do we have forms, Spencer? We do, very good. Okay, first order of business. Honolulu Fire Department, oh, before that, I mean, I wish everybody a happy Chinese New Year, Year of the Dragon. Anybody a dragon here? You think you are. Oh, Chance is the dragon, you know, because if you are Year of the Dragon, I know how old you are. And I'm not going to go through increments of 12, okay? Chance, I know you're not 12. Okay, anyway, Gongi P'at Choi. First of all, first order of business is the Honolulu Fire Department, are you here? Okay, no, let's move on. Honolulu Police Department, are you here? No? Honolulu Board of Water Supply, are you here? All right. We've got enough people here. All right, moving along. Yeah. And by the way, by the way, folks, I'm sorry, I thought we had the record. Remember last meeting, we ended with one hour, one hour? I'm sorry to say, I heard one another Neighborhood Board beat our record by five minutes. And I won't mention that, that Neighborhood Board, because I don't want to give them any credit. I figured we did pretty good for one hour, especially with that presentation, because Jero did a very good job. And by the way, somebody mentioned the fact that maybe, I think it was Darren, that maybe we could have it posted or something? You know, that presentation by Jero, share it with the other Neighborhood Boards? Can we do that, Spencer? I know it's not on the agenda, but I thought I'd just mention it. I thought it was a very good presentation.
So it is posted right now, if you look up on the screen, this is our Google Drive. It's on our, it's on here.
Oh, okay.
You can download it.
Oh, good.
But...
Yeah, because after Jero's presentation, I had to go remove some stuff from the, that area. Okay, moving right along, vacancies. Anybody here or on a WebEx that would like to fill the vacancies from Sub District 4 and Sub District 5, anybody in the WebEx? Okay, moving right along, Resident and Community Concerns, any, yes, Carol?
I turned in this paper to Spencer already, but there's a walk signal button that's not working on the corner of North King Street and Umi Street. And I showed him which one it is, but it, when you press the button, it doesn't signal, it doesn't change the signal to allow you to walk, and so, yeah.
It's taking notes, yes, Chance?
I just, I would like an update in regards to what's going to be happening to the Longs or the former CVS building at the intersection of Lilihan Kuhkini. One of the, or a couple of the business owners over there kind of were concerned because there is a few houseless persons who made that, I don't want to say housing, but I, to my understanding, there was a bed there, and then one of them ended up getting picked up by HPD two weeks ago because they were getting violent with some folks at the nearby bus stops. But if I could, if we could get an update, thank you. Lilihan intersection of Lilihan, or, or no, sorry, School Street and, no, 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 it is Lilihan Kuhkini, yeah, Lilihan Kuhkini, yeah, thank you.
You know where it is, that, across from Finance Factors, okay?
Way more.
Okay, all right, there you go, next to Lilihan Bakery. Anybody else, resident concerns? All right. Let's see, anybody having reports of attendance at any meeting that may affect us? No, okay. Ompo. Oh.
Okay, so the Citizens Advisory Committee to the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is for transportation, met last Wednesday, February 7. They, Chris Clark, who is a chief planner with DTS for the city, Department of Transportation Services, gave us an update of some of the city projects for transportation, and quite a few, but the ones of note, there is in design transit priority lanes for Kohio Avenue, which will be specifically for buses, that's tour buses and regular buses, so there'll be more flow of traffic faster, and you should be able to get places faster on the bus than by car, which is the plan, you know, trying to keep the cars out of Waikiki. Again, it's in design, so there'll be lots of opportunity for public comment. The goal is 100% electric buses by 2040. There's federal funding for this, quite a high percentage federal funding, but they can't turn it over right away to electric because of the charging infrastructure, the electric charging infrastructure that needs to be created and, you know, just sort of do it gradually. So 2040, hopefully. Let's see, and there's a Vision Zero project, which means 0% pedestrian deaths. So there are a lot more signs now. In certain areas, there are signs that say, you know, in this intersection, only 40% of cars stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk. So, you know, it's like, be careful, you know, and warning to the cars too, and more signage. Let's see, and on North King Street, there will be a bikeway between Eve Le and Middle Street. This is coming with pedestrian protection. That's on the radar. And when we have any sort of transportation issues with the city or Oahu, this person, who's, you know, Chris Clark, Complete Streets, it's his address at honolulu.gov, chief planner, said the best, absolute best way to report any sort of problems is to go to complaints@honolulu.gov and start a work order. If you do it any other way, it's good too, but this way you actually start a work order, and then you have a number you can track if there's no response or a slow response. So that's, that was his suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from, yes, Darren?
Sorry, just a quick question, for the 2040 timeline that they've placed out, was that for just electric or was that for renewable as well?
For electric powered buses.
Thank you.
I hope I'm still around for that. I'm just, I was calculating how many more years. Don't worry about you guys, you guys are young. Any other questions from the audience? None? Well, you're not, thank you very much, Cora. All right, Mayor's Representative, Ed.
Hello and good evening. Edward Ospanos, Deputy Director, Department of Community Services. I'm serving as the Mayor's Rep for this Neighborhood Board. A few updates and announcements coming from the Mayor's Press Letter, Newsletter, Monthly Newsletter. You can find the newsletter at honolulu.org/newsletter. Handful of announcements from there. First up is the new yellow rescue tube program that they have on the East Oahu beaches. This was in partnership with the Lions and Rotary Clubs of those that, that area. As a former lifeguard, I'll tell you, those are, things are great. You know, I kind of grew up in that area where, grew up in the era where you didn't have those rescue tubes, and you had to swim for two people, so those rescue tubes are amazing and useful, especially in those areas where it's very unassuming and folks go in quite often. Next up is the Kahuku Community Swimming Pool, that there was a planning exercise. This was the first swimming pool that's been done in a few decades that the city is planning on. And again, an area that's surrounded by water and dangerous currents out there in Kahuku. So there was a lot of community excitement out there. Then we have the Waikiki Shell is going to be roping with a new pool of show in partnership with the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement. So they'll be putting us a pool of show, Sundays through Thursdays at 9:30 a.m. And the first one, it's free to the public, and the first one's actually going to start this week on February 15. Last one is a new sculpture and deal at Inha Park, Sister City and Incha. Probably my most and more important announcement for tonight is that, for the first time, the Honolulu Zoo has been nominated for to be a candidate in the Best Zoo in America. In 2024 USA Today, 10 Best Reader's Choice, so it's a reader's choice kind of situation. So between now and then this month, if you go to the Honolulu Zoo website, honoluzoo.org, you can vote, you can vote once a day, all the way, every day until March 4 at 6:59 a.m. Hawaii Standard Time. I voted this morning, and we are in fourth place right now. Last week, we were third, so we slipped one spot down to four. But if we vote every day until now and March 4, 6:59 a.m., we can try and get our zoo recognized as the top zoo in the nation. Our last, last one is a shout out to Spencer and his group. Neighborhood Commission Office has put a plug in here that they are hiring Neighborhood Board assistants, so helps Spencer and his team shoulder the load. And you know, I heard, you know, there was a, there's a number of these Neighborhood Boards out there, and you know, they have monthly meetings, so I mean, they're really tracking like thousands of requests coming out every meeting. So I'm open to that, Spencer has no small job, anything you can do to help his team out, looking forward to that. Moving on to the outstanding issues that I have, I have several reports, even making a more of a effort, I mean, definitely making an effort to get more responsive on the requests coming out of these things. The first one I have is the crosswalk restriping. This was on School Street in the vicinity of Oahu Streets and Ko Kea. So right now, the DTS or DFM has kind of prioritized the restriping of School Street. They tried to get it this month, but the weather conditions just weren't that great. So this schedule is on the slate, is something that they are working on. The crosswalk at Ko Kea and School Street, DFM is working out with DTS on the, whether or not it can be restripped. A few meetings ago, I mentioned that DTS, DFM reported that that Ko Kea Street crosswalk was eradicated, was removed. So they're kind of carrying that up right now. You know, I think I've heard reports from people that it's a well-used crosswalk on either side. It's something that's in our plans. So once DFM gets that, and if they're passing through that area, they will restrict that crosswalk.
Should I keep that on the agenda, or is it done?
You can keep it on the agenda.
All right.
Particularly that, that's one in front of Ko Kea Street, running 1116 School Street.
Okay.
That's something that they want, they're working out right now. Stop, missing stop sign at Leva Drive in Lulena Street, the Lulena Place and Akanani Drive near the cemetery. That stop sign was based on November 21, 2023. They're not sure what stop sign is missing. If you guys have a more exact location, we can hit that one in.
It's on the corner of Hula Street and Lulena? Yeah, it's still missing.
Crosswalk lighting concerns, this was on Lilihan Street near Holokahana Lane. So the crosswalk at Lilihan Street and Holokahana Lane are functioning properly. What they did do in the area is increase the light output of the streetlights right above it. So they get more, highlight that crosswalk a little better.
Let me make mention, I put that in because when we did our parade, we went the long way and came around. And thank goodness, thank you for Darren, I knew he hit some crosswalk, I didn't see him, it was real dark, right? Yeah, yeah, but anyway, thank you. All I need is lighting, thank you. Is it going to be done or is, not yet?
The streetlights have been increased, the...
They have been increased. I'll drive it, I'll drive down tonight. Thank you.
If you need anything else, let me know on that, we can follow up some more on that one if it's, needs to be brighter. Next one, the Hala Drive and Kapalama Street intersection. This is the, trying to make it a four-way stop, right now it's a two-way stop. The two-way stop is the, have a diamond head of traffic, yeah. So DTS responded that they were to conduct the investigation, which required research, site inspection, speed study, analysis of traffic history. It's not an intersection that they've studied, I'd have a lot of information on. So it will take some time to get this study on, but hopefully we'll surprise the board we're finding by the end of, no later than August of this month, or this year, sorry, but something that they're going to gather information on. If it gets done sooner, I'll bring that report back sooner. The unpermitted dumping location on Kapalama Avenue, reported on last meeting as 1731 Kapalama Avenue. They, DPP Deputy Director Sumato took a look at it. He kind of corrected the address to 1733 Kapalama Avenue. They did issue a notice of violation on January 26 because they were, they did identify the storage yard usage with the red dumpsters and trash bins on the property. There are no building permits on file, but in a recent site inspection, looks like it's cleared out. Okay. And those were the open items I had. Unfortunately, Deputy Director Sumato said he couldn't make today's meeting, so I'm happy to take any feedback to him.
Okay, there's a couple more, I believe I have on the agenda under item New Business D 378 North School Street. Who brought that up? Somebody did? Anybody? No, I'm going to cross it out, I don't know, I have it on my agenda. One more thing, I want to add something. If you take this address down, it's 1612 Leva Drive, and there's a no parking sign that just, literally just, I think it got wrapped. It's in front of the Kaia Estate, which is a historical residence, but it's down. No, it's still, it's still there, it just got down, whacked, thank you. Questions? Anybody? No questions, I have, any questions from the audience or the city representative? Okay, I have one question. I want to congratulate the city. All of us got a news release from Mayor Blangiardi in regards to an appeals board opposed to revocation of a monster home building permit. Let's see, and actually, it was the Honolulu Building Board of Appeals. Now, that is an administrative board. So my question is, now it's probably going to, well, I don't know what the developer is going to do. He can take it to Circuit Court on, on appeal, and then from the trial circuit court, go to an intermediate court of appeals, he can delay this. And then, if he's not happy, he can take a cert and go to the Supreme Court. So my question is, once it stops, what is the city going to do? It's a rhetorical question. I mean, you know, they're in, he's in violation, so the question is, what's going to happen when it's all over? And this is a good test case. Remember I asked you the question, I think of Jero, you know, tear it down. No, he's not, you can't see that, you can't see that, conform to the building code. So again, congratulations, first step, let's see what happens. Any other questions? Any follow up on that? Because we have a lot of monster homes in ours. Any questions from the audience? Okay, if not, Ed, thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Let's see, who's up next? Councilmember Tyler Santos Tam. Brandon?
This is Lisa. I'm online.
Hi, hi, hi.
Hi. So I'll be giving a report.
Thank you.
It's kind of short tonight. I just wanted to share that we did receive a request for striping on most of Leva Drive, and so we'll be working with DFM on that. Councilmember has also requested from DFM any type of like maybe striping schedules within the area so that we can keep everybody more updated on that type of stuff. I'd also like to bring attention to their newsletter that he just put out. You should have received it by email, if not, feel free to let me know, and we can send that out. So I just want to point out in our bills and legislation, legislation sections that we've highlighted Bill 1 for 2024, which is raising the purchasing age of herbal cigarettes. We've also highlighted Bill 3 of 2024, incentives for construction of affordable rental housing, and how our state and city legislatures, how we're coming together to continue fentanyl, the fight on fentanyl. There's a bunch more sections in the newsletter, so feel free to review that. And at this time, that's all that I have to report.
Thank you very much. I think we have on our agenda a bill 57 and 58. Anybody have any questions of Councilmember Tam's representative? Because we're going to discuss that resolution, it was prepared by Okora.
I guess I have a question. Is it still possibly slated for committee hearings in April? I heard it was April.
I can double check for you on that, I'm not sure if it is out, but yeah, I can definitely ask.
Right, and yeah, let us know.
Okay.
Thank you, any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Okay, if not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, moving right along. Let's see, Senator Rhodes.
Hi, my name is Peyton, I'm here on behalf of Senator Rhodes. I have a written message from him addressed to you, Chairman Fong. I would like to submit my report to Lilihan Neighborhood Board on the following matters. I received numerous complaints regarding the feral chickens in the community. As in past occurrences, I will use some of my legislative funds to have them removed. If you have any hotspots, please let me know. Last week, the Department, oh, this is a new point. Last week, the Department of Health reported 673 new cases of COVID within a seven-day average of 95 cases and one death for that week. I encourage everyone to stay up to date on their COVID shots as well as their flu shots. And if you're over the age of 60, there is now also a vaccine for respiratory syncytial virus, which is a good idea to get. As always, please don't hesitate to call, reach out to my office, and that can be, that can be met at 808-586-6130, or you can email us at senhroads@capital.hawaii.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? May I say, say, somebody had a question? No? Thank? I'm sorry? Henry, did you have a question?
Yes. It counts for COVID. What about the flu? That we need to know a total virus count and the breakdown between flu and COVID.
I'm going to hear what you'd like to break down between the virus.
You want to repeat that question, Henry? Did you understand that question?
Sure I did.
Henry, you want to repeat the question?
Okay. Hang on, let me get off the blue too. I'm more concerned, what is the flu count compared to the COVID count?
Let me see, what's the flu count versus the COVID count?
I don't have it in front of me, but I will keep track of that and note it for next, next meeting, the next meeting.
If he keeps reporting COVID, make sure he also reports the flu.
Okay. Any other questions? I just want to say, please thank Senator Rhodes. Because in his newsletter, he says that due to the maneuvers of complaints about feral chicken, he's going to dig into his legislative funds and have them removed. And if anybody has a problem, just contact his office. So tell Senator Rhodes, thank you very much.
Will do.
Any questions, any more questions, comments? Okay, if not, thank you very much, moving right along. Let's see, Senator Kim's office.
Hi, I'm new to Senator Kim's office, I'm Kiola. I'm replacing Lindsay that used to be at the office, so I'm new. Then, oh, sorry. Okay. So the community report has been sent digitally to Chairman Fong, I believe. That's our new community report, this one. And that, you can sign up digitally to receive it. If you need to sign up for it, you can send an email to at sendkim@capital.hawaii.gov to sign up for that. And just mention that you're signing up for the community board letter. The community board, I mean, the community report has highlighted numerous bills that the center introduced. I will touch up on a couple that the center wants you to be aware of and send in testimony if you're in support of the measures. The first one is the feral chickens, that's SB 2401. That appeals funds to the city to expand the feral chicken control program. And as a result of the Working Group Resolution passed by the legislature last year, passed out of committee with amendments, and now goes on to Ways and Means Committee for approval. The second one is Safety Check SB 3012, which changes a motor vehicle safety check requirement from one year to every two years, and that's up for decision-making tomorrow. And if it passes, it will go on to Ways and Means Committee. The third bill is Weed Whacker Bill SB 3011, which is, oh, we is, there's already a law that restricts leaf blowers that can be only operated between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., and 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sundays, and federal holidays. So this bill would include that weed whackers are the same as leaf blowers because it causes the same amount of noise and disrupts everybody. And it will be heard on Wednesday, February 14. So you still have time to send in testimony. To do so, you can visit the www.capital.hawaii.gov, and in the search bar, type SB 3011. And then you can click the gold box where it says Submit Testimony. And then you'll need to create an account if you do not have one already, if you want to submit testimony with your name. So Senator already mailed out her community bulletin, so that's the one with the survey. So that has a community survey. So if you haven't mailed yours in, you can still mail it in, or you can respond online to her. This will ensure that your responses are factored into the final results, which will be calculated. Some community updates. Or that there's going to be, they broke land for the affordable housing for seniors on January 12, 2024. So it's going to provide about 800 affordable housing units for seniors, with the first phase offering 250 units. And then the projected monthly rents range from $553 to $1,550. For the Red Hill Defuelling Update, there was a question asked last time on who was paying for it. So the Department of Defense secured $1 million from, $100 million from the U.S. Senate. And that was January this year. I mean, yeah. So that's who's funding it, it's the Department of Defense. And then, for Lilihan Library. They're going to have a storytelling event on February 24 from 2:30 p.m. to 3:15 p.m. They're going to have a storytelling event on February twenty-fourth from two thirty PM to three fifteen PM. Storyteller Diane Frallati will show stories from the earliest days of slavery to present day, including songs, sign language, humor, and audience participation. You can register for the program at www.ko ka dot O R G. And then. Any questions for Senator Kim's office?
Can you repeat the date that the Lihana Library is going to have the presentation again?
For which one?
The presentation at the Lihana Library.
Oh, the Lihana Library? Yeah. Yeah. That's on February twenty, February twenty-fourth.
And the time again?
Two thirty PM to three fifteen PM.
And what was it again? It's going to be about what?
Celebrate Black History Month.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Any, any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Representative.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you, everyone. First, some quick updates on things that have been on my list. The Liliokalani Botanical Gardens School Street Bridge Homeless Encapment. I checked in with DOT and DFM. Unfortunately, because of all the rainy weather and because of a lot of the stuffs like in the stream and on the stream embankments, DFM said they weren't able to schedule yet, but they assured me that is still on the list. And as soon as they can get the equipment down there, they'll sweep the area. Rose Ring Parakeets, I think it's up there on. So technically, the bill I had last year is still live. I was just going to follow it. But I saw there's another bill that's actually moving in the House. It's House Bill, so HB two three two nine. And this does essentially the same thing that are the bill that I introduced for the board last year does. It's funding to start research up again for Rose Ring Parakeet Population Control. It's probably going to be piloted on Kauai, you know, where they have that super huge population. And then they're hoping to find best practices from that to go to the other islands and work on population control for Rose Ring Parakeets. That's actually scheduled on this week, on February fourteenth. If you're signed up for the Capitol website, you want to just go submit testimony and support to let the committees know, you know, that this is an issue, even us here in Oahu are interested in funding. That would be great. If you guys need any help or instructions on how to submit testimony, just contact my office. My, my staff's really good about getting everyone set up. Another feral chicken bill. So I reintroduced the same bill I had for the board last year. That's going to be HB two zero four six. So a little different from some of the other programs we've heard about tonight. So my bill actually creates a management program with the city and two of our state agencies, Department of Land and Natural Resources and Department of Agriculture, just instructing them to say, hey, no, everybody work together, create an actual agency that's going to be in charge of handling this issue in our communities. That was actually heard today in the House and it passed out of the Agriculture Committee. So it's going to be going on to finance. I'll provide more updates as I get them on that. Another bill, if you're on my email list. I sent out an email this weekend about a bill that I'm watching about housing. I know we just talked about monster homes. So I thought this was kind of pertinent. So this bill is HB one six three zero. And it makes a bunch of changes to what's going to be allowed for developing in our residential areas. I just want to flag this board because I know, you know, when we talk about monster homes and the stress that kind of puts on the neighborhoods, especially with the amount of people coming in and the street parking issue. Because typically we don't see enough street, off-street parking being built on these properties. I just wanted to flag this bill for the board because this bill would essentially allow a couple of things. It's lowering the minimum subdivision rate of a lot from to two thousand square feet. I believe Honolulu County currently sets theirs at thirty-five hundred square. So this would be a smaller subdivision of a lot where people could build another dwelling. It also allows for up to three residential lots. Three residential dwellings per lot. And it's being described in the bill as, you know, you would have one primary dwelling and then up to two other dwellings, which I'm told are essentially going to be ADUs. But you know, this is just more kind of people coming into the neighborhood. I was really concerned with the lack of parking requirements that's in the bill. I was trying to work the Housing Chair on this, but the version that actually was heard in committee and passed and will likely pass out of the House does not have any parking requirements, unfortunately. It also, currently, a lot of our kind of laws about ADUs have, you know, kind of owner occupancy limits. And this bill would ban that. There's no, it says that there, we can't have any owner occupancy requirements for these kind of properties. I really appreciate, you know, that our Housing Chair is trying to, you know, build up housing inventory in the, in, in our residential neighborhoods. But I just have these kind of concerns seeing as what we've given with not, you know, people who are building for their families or just renting out to one or two people. But we're seeing these developers who kind of come in, buy up the lots, like raise the entire house and kind of take advantage of what is allowed to be built. And I just had some concerns about what this bill would mean for our area, given what we've seen in the past. I plan to oppose this bill on the floor as written and I'll keep the board updated. It's, it only had one committee hearing in the House, so unfortunately, there's no more opportunity to submit public testimony until it, unless it's heard and scheduled in the Senate. Hopefully, I can send out an email if that happens. And if anyone would like to submit testimony, I appreciate that. Kind of just kind of voice our concerns about the situation. Then, we got some information. AARP is giving some caregiving workshops for those who, you know, have to work on managing care of a loved one. These, they're going to be providing resources and technology to kind of help with both the affordability and the kind of, you know, the stresslessness of having to be a caregiver at home. You can register online at events.aarp.org backslash hi cares, H I C A R E twenty-four. Or there's a number, eight seven seven nine two six eight three zero zero. There's two workshops coming up. There's one on Friday, February twenty-third at Central Union Church at nine thirty AM or Saturday, February twenty-fourth at Winburn Community College, also at nine thirty AM. And then also, we got some information if anyone knows any high school seniors looking for college money. HMSA is opening up its Kama, or Kaimana Awards and Scholarship Program for 2024. Student scholarships awards of five thousand dollars for fifteen high school seniors. Oh, and also some awards for schools that can be applied for fifteen hundred dollars. You can do applications and there's more information on requirements and everything at HMSA's website. You can go to HMSA.com backslash Kaimana, K A I M A N A. It has all the restrictions and other requirements. Yes. And people just need to, they have until Friday, February twenty-third at four PM to apply for that and get a little bit help with college. And that's all I have on my list. If there's any questions or anything I can take back before it happens, so.
Thank you very much, Representative. In regards to the bill sixteen thirty, we had a discussion and I already sent you a testimony, but I guess my only concern was, was it going to help stop the proliferation of monster homes? And I think we, pursuant to our discussion, I'm not going to submit my, my, my testimony because I don't know if it will. I don't know if it's going to be worse or not, but.
It's not really meant to be. It's, it's not a bill that's addressing monster homes at all. I, sorry, that was confusing. I only brought up monster homes because I can see the same kind of neighborhood stresses that have resulted from monster homes also happening.
Okay.
This bill, this situation.
Well, I'm glad you called me because if not, I, because who's this guy? What is he talking about, right? Because I sent it to all of the board and it was a real tight squeeze because the hearing was today, you know.
Yeah, this was kind of bad timing. We have strong house rules, but this one, the timing worked out kind of bad where the notice didn't come out on Friday and the hearing was in the South Room, so.
Also, if I may, Spencer, you got my picture? I, I took the liberty after how many months of going down to Liliokalani Gardens on Saturday in the afternoon. It's still a very nice park. As a matter of fact, no one was there except me. And I talked to the neighbor and the neighbor says, no, no, I don't go there. And he says, well, first of all, it's not crowded because of two things. It's still there. By the way, this is the picture I took of Liliokalani Gardens. That's the falls. Nice, huh? It is nice. I didn't know how to get the other. I have three more, three more pictures. But I said, oh, I'll go down and take a picture. So you can be proud of that. And that, that's in keeping with what I have on item number new business, discover your, discovery. I'm supposed to discover, discover your neighborhood. I'm thinking that if you, we have some points of interest in our neighborhood, let's show it to our neighborhood board. Yeah, so this is one of them. So that's what it looks like. It's still there. It's still beautiful. Two things. The complaint was no parking. And if you want to get into the park, you got to go over the wall. And for old guys, it's hard, but there's no entrance. But this is for the city, not for the state. The city, it's a city park. Yeah, yeah. No, that's, no, that's okay. You don't have to answer it. I'm just telling you right now. Okay, well, the city part was easy. It was nice. It was well-kept. I just couldn't get over, it took, it took a long time getting over that. You know, that stone wall. I got to, you know, put my old coal aid and turn my, anyway. Yes.
There's another, there's a parking area on Koakini. And then you walk in, there's a path, but it's a little, a little long.
I know about that one. I drove from School Street down into the, I'm not going to go all the way to Makookine and walk down. I'm going to do that one day and I'm going to invite all of you guys to come from Koakine down and go back up. I know that's very beautiful. Second thing is. I have a picture of it. There is a gate at the end of the Makai Inn of the park, okay? The Makai Inn of the park. That starts with the state because that's state jurisdiction. And I have a picture of that. And along the fence line of that park where it's state jurisdiction, it says no trespassing. The gates lock. I see laundry being hung on the, the gates. And that's the area where all the homeless are. So I think that's a state jurisdiction. They're staying away from the city, so you can relax.
Yeah, that's why we're trying to do this suite there, right? I know. So the state has everything underneath the bridge, the school street bridge and the highway and then the rest is city.
Okay. I just.
They know they're there.
All right.
I just try to go down. DOT is a little more flexible, so they're able to go down and they sweep their area a little more often.
Yeah. But it is a very nice park. It really is. It's too bad it's underutilized. I didn't see anybody there. It's Saturday afternoon. Yeah, but anyway. Any questions? Yes. Donald.
You know, we have this thing on A about parrots, parrot, I mean, parrot and chickens. Well, cats. I caught a cat. Okay? In a trap. And I call Humane Society. Humane Society does not accept cats. I wanted to know if this was a domestic cat. I wanted them to scan if there is a chip in the back. But they said they don't accept it. So. What do I do with a cat? It's a feral cat. It's in my yard. I mean. The only thing I had to do was release it because I, I don't want to take it out someplace else and dump it and give somebody else the same problem, right?
I don't think there are any state resources. Are there cities that have official resources? In, in the future, I can share some information on, you know, there are volunteer groups that do kind of feral cat work and outreach that might be able to help me with that. In the future, I can share the numbers, the emails with the board. I don't think there's any official city or state program right now. There, there's always some bills going through the legislature, but I, I, sorry, I, I'm not familiar with anything really moving at this point.
Anybody else, anybody else in the board or in the community, anybody have a problem with feral cats, except for Donald?
No. We had a resident came up about maybe about six months or a year ago. And she had the same thing. The residents were feeding the feral cats, but the cats were coming into their yard and of course making their business, okay? And so-called urination. And they were very. They had no answer on how, how to get rid of it. And I thought there was a private contractor that was supposed to be hired by a city.
That was for chickens only. I don't, I don't think there's a current cat program anywhere.
Chairman?
Oh, yeah.
Cora?
I have some, not a major problem in my yard, but you know, I think it's a neighborhood cat that's allowed to roam free. But, you know, they do number one and number two, and it's kind of smelly. But I, and I did check a few years ago, pre-COVID, with the Humane Society. And they did at that point have a, you can, you can catch them. And then you kind of have to, you know, see if they have a microchip or whatever. But then you kind of own the cat in a way because if there's no owner of record. And then they will neuter the cat and then you can release it. But it sort of becomes your cat. If nobody else, you know, has, has a chip on it.
So Donald, what's the name of your cat?
Again. I, I released it. I released it and I just forgot about it because the thing is that I didn't want to give somebody else this, you know, this, the problem. So I didn't want to move him someplace else.
I think it's a good issue. I'll, I'll put it on the agenda and maybe the city and the state can come up with a solution. Chance?
Sorry, Representative. I just have one last question. For HB twenty forty-six, does it, would it, would the working group only pertain to coming with the department to address the feral chicken and parakeets crisis, or would it be feral animals overall?
Oh, the joint, it's not a task force. It's to create an actual agency.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It was, it was specifically because it has feral chickens. And I think we can't add anything else in because I think that's the title of the bill also relating to feral chickens. So we kind of run into title problems if we start adding other things in at this point.
Is it something that could possibly be written in the future? Or would it be too complicated to be mixing in these kind of different animals into that aspect?
Um, I mean, I think in different years, you know, the legislators tried to do different things. I've seen like big, you know, all kind of like hates cats, chickens, everything bills. They kind of tend to die because they're, I, I don't know. I went this chicken route because it seemed like a, like a, like a pest that everyone kind of seemed on board with trying to manage. But yeah, I mean, I'm happy to look into something else if we, if I can.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Darren. All right.
So I do have some information on the cat programs. The Department of Customer Services at the city, we do have a contract with the Hawaii Humane Society that does that. As a member Yamamoto mentioned, it's more around feral cat population control, not necessarily trying to be a cat sitter for somebody's lost cat. So that, so a few months ago, just a member Nito was correct that we did have a, somebody did approach the neighborhood board talking about a feral cat problem behind the Kamehameha Center. So I believe we worked on that one. But again, it was more feral cat population control, not trying to find the owner of a lost cat.
So the solution is called Humane Society? Yeah. All right, Donald. Okay, he said doesn't work. Maybe you can follow up on that. I'll just, I'll leave it on that.
I was mentioning this feral cat population control, not finding the owner of lost cats.
Don't cats like chickens? I'm sorry. Darren?
Yes, sir. No problem. Just shoring up what Edward was saying. In November thirteenth on our neighborhood board, there was a Janelle that mentioned she was having a cat problem at the entrance to Kamehameha Schools. And the answer, I guess, at that time was Humane Society or City Animal Control, maybe with SPCA.
Humane Society or what? City?
City Animal Control. They said to call HPD. And then the, another option was SPCA.
Call HPD?
Or City Animal Control.
All right, I don't have to put it on the agenda. Alright, I don't have to put it on the agenda. You got, you got a Humane Society or the City Animal Control with the City HPD, okay? I'm not gonna put it on the agenda, that's, that's your call. Yeah. Alright, thank you very much. Any other questions of our representative? Thank you very much. Uh, any questions from the audience? Uh, thank you very much, Representative. Uh, let's see, who's next? District 29 Representative, who is that?
May, May Mizuno.
Oh, alright.
Um, I thought somebody may be on, I can't tell.
Is Representative Mizuno here? Okay, her name is May. M-E-Y. Okay, what you need, you need to vote? But M-A-Y? M-E-Y, not M-A-E. Okay. She was, she is the wife of the former representative who never, never mind. Okay, moving right along. Yes, yes.
To our representative, um, is that in the constitution where the governor um, so-called appoint someone on an electorate? For show?
I'm gonna, I know the answer, but I'm gonna let our representative answer that question.
No, I just wanted to know because.
No, that's a, that's a good question. It's a good question.
It's not in the constitution, but it's in the Hawaii Revive Statutes. Um, it, so it's in our laws that the, the party of the person who vacates submits three names to send to the governor and the governor chooses one name from those three. It's in the statute.
To me, it, it, it should be a committee because that was the choice of the people and not one person or one party. It should be the choice of the people. And right now, the choice of the people have not heard. I mean, you folks always talk about transparency and all that, but I have rarely seen any transparency between governments. So um.
If you'd like to look into changing the law, Donald, I'm happy to work with you on a bill for next session, but we're kind of past the.
Donald, bottom line is, if we're, yeah.
Do that with you.
I think, let me say that if you're not happy, that's the law. I know that, I asked the same question. So if you're not happy, we should change the law. It's not even a violation of the ethics. Okay, I know, because I'm the Chair of the State Ethics Commission. Alright, moving, any other questions? None, let's move on. Um, let's see, Representative from District 28, Daniel Hope. Any, any Representative? Oh, is, wait a minute, let me finish this up. Any, any Representative from the governor's office? Alright, I'm gonna go through this first. Any Representative from the First Congressional District Representative Ed Casas Office? Okay. Now, I found out that we have Iris back on Board of Water Supply, is that correct? You said, you see her there?
Hi there, yes. Thank you for taking me out of order. I'm so sorry that I missed last month. And I'm late this month. Tomorrow, next month, I'll be even earlier, I'll be early. So yeah, sorry for last month. I wanted to just read our general announcement, which might have been mentioned already. There's a hundred dollar toilet rebate. It's limited time. So it's a, um, it's for water sense label toilets, which are 1.2 gallons per flush or less. So this hundred dollars is more than double or rebate amount. And it's only offered for 90 days until April 18th. So the special rebate is limited to four per household and 10 for commercial customers. So go to BoardOfWaterSupply.com/rebates. So that's my one general announcement. I had questions from November that um, let me get to the screen, sorry. So it was asked in November that um, when we have our poster and porch contest winners, if they live in Neighborhood Board 14, if we could let you guys, um, let you guys know so that you guys could give a recognition for them. So we will be letting you guys know that for when the winners of the poster porch contest, if they live in your, in this neighborhood board. And then the second question was um, um, remember Nita asked about the grace period about submitting a rebate, like this toilet rebate. Um, so if there's a grace period for submitting it, because you had to submit it within 60 days. And unfortunately, per our terms and conditions, yeah, the rebate application and sales receipt must be received within 60 days of the purchase date. The receipt must indicate the make, model, cost and purchase date. And an incomplete application will be returned unprocessed. So like I kind of just mentioned, more information, you can go to BoardOfWaterSupply.com/rebates. And the other one you could call actually is 808-237-6877. So that's just my follow-up from November and my, is there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Iris. Any questions on the board? Yes, Donald?
Iris, you know, um, a while back, we had this adverse conditions, um, storm coming, flooding and all that. And it said to fill water in the bucket. When I remember last year, I think you stated that if there is a power outage, that the water supply had generators, utility generators to pump the water to the reservoir. Is that, am I correct in thinking that Water Water Supply has an emergency plan to provide water to the community?
Yes, we do. We have emergency generators at certain critical stations. And we do actually have generators that we can drive around to some other stations. But we do ask you to, you know, conserve water, of course, because it's, you don't ever know how long the, the blackout may be. So I mean, they also run out of generator, but there's also fuel, you know, so there's, we do have a plan. It is the basic bottom line, and we do have generators. But we do ask for conservation and storing your water if you can.
So that information was incorrect. The Water Water Supply does have an emergency plan in case um, we lose power, that we still have water coming through our pipes, correct?
Oh, um, I don't know about it being incorrect. We do have an emergency plan. And yes, we should have water. Um, if we can fill the reservoirs, then you should have water as long as there's no main breaks. So I'm not certain what might be incorrect, sorry.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, no, thank you, Iris. Let's go back. Do we have any Representative from the Honolulu Fire Department? Do we have a Representative from the Honolulu Police Department? Oh, I guess they forsook us. Yeah. First responders, now, um, next on the agenda we have on the presentations, do we have Representative from AT&amp;T? Here on, on the WebEx?
Yep, that is me.
Yeah, hi, you are Ashley, right?
Yes, I am.
Alright, Ashley, it's all yours.
Do you need me to share my screen? You guys can see. Alright, can you guys see my screen up there?
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright, perfect. So my name is Ashley with Central Line Communications. Um, I am a um, site acquisition company that works on behalf of AT&amp;T. And they are proposing a new telecommunications facility on the rooftop of the St. Francis Medical Center, uh, located at 2226 Liliha Street. As you might know, there's currently T-Mobile, Dish Wireless and Verizon Wireless located up on that rooftop. So basically, they are looking to build the site in order to increase their coverage in the, the Liliha area. Um, right now, they are getting overloaded with their current site. So building a new site helps offload that site and provide more data bandwidth for everyone to use. In addition, this is also going to be available to the FirstNet network, which is a nationwide public safety broadband network dedicated to first responders only. And you know, Governor Ege had opted into that platform back in August 2017. And we are almost done with our build-out. It's been a little bit of a challenge to secure some sites in the necessary areas. So uh, we are trying to get all of our FirstNet sites done um, by the end of 2025, and this was one of the last ones. So I'm sure you're familiar with the area, but I have on my screen the St. Francis Medical Center is right here in the middle. And then the two sites existing in this area are down further um, Malka and Makai from that area. So those are the ones that need help. They're getting overloaded with too many users on these sites. But since it is a rooftop facility, um, there's no additional ground requirements, no ground disturbances, nothing like that. But everything is going to be confined to the existing building rooftop. And this is the proposed installation. So you can see the existing carrier right here on Little Elevator Penthouse. And AT&amp;T is just going to mount their antennas to match the same height as the existing antennas. Now, this is considered a FCC 6409 eligible facilities request because of the presence of the existing antennas. Um, that is a 60-day shot clock for permitting, which includes the conditional use permit, which is in progress. And that expires on March 5th. So pretty soon after that, they, AT&amp;T will be getting their building permit and looking to start construction at that time. And that is all I have. I have my contact information. I mean, if anybody has any questions later on, they can email me.
Okay, um, thank you, Ashley. Any questions? That's gonna be on the top of us, St. Francis Hospital. Yes, Cora?
Um, I, just sort of a basic cell tower question. Um, this helps the Liliha area, I understand. Um, but does it also help people further up Alava and then over on Kam Heights or not?
It'll, it'll actually help bridge, you know, the, so the ways cell towers basically work is one antenna picks up your signal. And then as you get farther away from that cell tower, it gets transferred to the nearest one. So that, this site will actually help bridge the gap in between the Kamamei Heights area and the Liliha area.
Thank you.
Any other question from the board? Any questions from the audience? Yes. Who's yes?
Okay. My question, okay, my question is, will it overlap or reduce the existing signals from the present carriers?
Like you're saying, will it interfere with Verizon and, and T-Mobile and that kind of stuff?
Yes, but they have existing signals now, so they have a base measurement. Throw in another set of antennas, would that affect their signal strength?
Oh, no. Um, so each carrier has their own, um, what they have to do is they have to buy frequency and bandwidth from the FCC. Each carrier has their own, you know, dedicated frequency, so they don't overlap with each other. And they run specific testing for their interference. And they're generally pointed in different directions.
Is that the case here, pointing in different directions?
Yes. So each antenna itself can be tilted and pointed either up, down, left, right, to, you know, beam wherever they need their coverage. And so they run all of the, um, they're called electromagnetic emissions tests before installing. And then they do um, on-air testing, which they turn off each different antenna. And then they turn the other ones on to make sure there's no interference.
Can you highlight the area that this antenna is aiming towards and who's benefiting from it?
I can provide that information um, at a later date. I don't have that currently on me.
Why don't you send that information to me and then I'll disseminate it to our board?
Sure, can do.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the, to the board or the public? If none, Ashley, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, moving right along. Um, let's see. I need approval of the minutes from January 8th, 2024. Are there any? Yes.
I'd like to make some corrections. Uh, number five, reports. Uh, if you could spell my last name right, that would be great. Number five, reports.
Oh, yeah, go on.
I just like my name spelled correctly.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Spencer? Let's make sure you, is C-O-C?
K-A-H.
K-A-H. Yes.
He struggled, I'm waiting. Right, right, right over here. Alright, we'll go with that square. Thank you very much. Any other corrections on the minutes? If not, uh, energy and emotion that we approve the minutes of um, January 8th, 2024?
So moved.
Moved by Carol? Seconded by Dale? Any discussion? All in favor, just raise your right hand? Any opposed? No, opposite, um, negative, so motions carry. Thank you very much. Alright, moving on to unfinished business. Item A, we pretty much, it's still, it's still in the workings. Eradication of parrots and feral chicken. I think we ought to add in cats now, right? No, we don't need cats. We know what to do with the cats, right? Alright. Uh, Lily O'Kolani Gardens, again, I'll leave that on the agenda. Um, is anybody from DPP, is Jero here? No, I think he has something to do. I'm gonna uh, hold off on item number C. Item number E and F, because Jero can give us an update on those three. Item D, no right turn on School Street, I believe. That's still, Carol, do you have anything on that?
When we met in December, the Department of Transportation rep said that they would come to our Neighborhood Board meeting when they had something to report. So they didn't come January or this, so I'm assuming they're still working on it.
I'll leave it on the agenda, thank you. Item number G, um, crosswalk at Bukka Street, still in the, still on the agenda. Four-way stop, intersection Hala and Kapalama Drive, it's still up for investigation. Okay, I'll leave that on the agenda. New business, um, we took care of A and B. Uh, sidewalks on Judge Street, I believe that was raised by Donald. And that was, you okay with that or I'm gonna eliminate it?
I think we should just uh, eliminate it because we know if something happens. We keep on beating on it, but uh, yeah, take it off.
Thank you very much. E, these, under E, I was just thinking, as I said before, in our neighborhood, we have some nice um, points of interest. And I just mentioned, well, I just showed you Lily O'Kolani Gardens. There's some others in our neighborhood. So I'm gonna leave it up to the board, um, you know, once a month, not every week. If you find that something's interesting in our neighborhood, let's share it with our residents, you know, maybe they can go. As a matter of fact, when you mentioned that getting to Lily O'Kolani Garden, you can start from Kuakini Street. There's a parking lot there, you can walk down. It's a very nice walk and it puts you right in the middle of the park. The hard part is you gotta walk back up. I did the shortcut. But that's one, and I think there are a few others, like, I don't know, Kuna Wai Park, uh, Knopewell Park on the top of Alava Heights. How about some of our structures? You know, when we were doing the parade, I just noticed as we're walking down Lily, walking down Liliha. walking down Leleha Street, you know how many, are they called, temples or shrines are there? I mean, I just, wow! And I don't know what they are. And I thought, if someone's interested, you know, take a picture, give us some history on it. They've been there a long time. So I'll open that up for discovery. I call it, it's called, not discovery, it's called discover your neighborhood. Once a month, beginning of the month, or whenever, just call me up and I'll put it on the agenda. Because there's a lot of other things, places I think, you know, be of interest. Okay, moving on to Bill 57 and 58 resolution. Cora, all yours.
It's actually a letter. And we had been approached, the board has been approached by several other boards who have signed these letters, approved and signed these letters in support of the illegal game rooms legislative package that is before the city council. And is, let me check, I can't see from here, is Ian Ross on?
Can you enlarge it so the public can see it?
He's not there. Okay, okay, then I'll, I'll, I'll give the background.
You're gonna have to read it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read it. And there's a bit of background also, but I'll, you know, it's pretty self-explanatory. So the, this has also been sent to the board members earlier, either late last night or early this morning. I hope you had a chance to review it. And it's there. I'll, I'll read it. So, "Dear Council Chair Tommy Waters and Council Members, Honolulu City Council, City and County of Honolulu, Leleha Puunui, Alava, Kamaha Heights, Neighborhood Board Number 14, urges the hearing and passage of Bill 57, Bill 58, and Resolution 23-228. This game rooms package would provide additional tools for the Honolulu Police Department and other city agencies to deter and shut down illegal game rooms on Oahu. Game rooms have long plagued Oahu, bringing guns, drugs, and crime into our neighborhoods. These locations have been sites of serious crimes, including kidnapping, shootings, and robbery. Game rooms have been identified in Leleha and adjacent neighborhoods in Kalihie and Palama, as well as elsewhere, but specifically, we wanted to mention this. On November 14th, 2023, the Downtown Chinatown, Kalihie Kai, and Makiki Loor Punchbowl Tantalus Neighborhood Boards hosted a joint meeting to discuss the issue. A member of the Kalihie Puunui Neighborhood Board 14 participated in this meeting. The meeting, which includes, included a panel of HPD Major Mike Lambert and Council Members Tyler Dos Santos Tam and Calvin Sei, found that game rooms often proliferate because of inadequate penalties. This is due in part to the fact that existing city ordinance primarily targets game room operators, not landlords. As a result, a game room is shut down, another often takes its place. The joint meeting was, also discussed potential solutions, including the game rooms package. Bill 57 would create additional penalties, including up to $150,000 in fines for landlords who allow game rooms on their properties. And Bill 58 would allow greater collaboration between HPD and the Department of Planning and Permitting. Neighborhood Board Number 14 urges the Honolulu City Council to hear and pass this package into law. Our board will partner with fellow neighborhood boards who also support these bills. Thank you for your consideration of our request. We would greatly appreciate being updated on these bills as they progress through the hearing and approval process. Mahalo, Chairman Fong, Neighborhood Board 14, with copies CC to Senator Rhodes, Senator Donna Mercado Kim, Representative Takuniuchi, Daniel Holt, May Mizuno, spelled it wrong, Ian Ross, Chair Neighborhood Board Number 10, Ernest Carvalho, Chair Neighborhood Board, oops, NB, Number 13, Roberta Mayer, Chair Neighborhood Board Number 1. These are all the chairs who sent letters, approved and sent letters.
Thank you very much, Cora. It's very well written. Any questions, first of all? Yeah, what's your pleasure?
I recommend that we approve of this letter and-
Let me do this. Let me entertain a motion that we approve of this resolution. Actually, this letter.
It's a letter.
Letter. And to be sent as, to the individuals you have named. Is there a second to that? Well, first of all, is there a motion? Do you want to make that motion? You might as well.
I saw moved.
Okay, it's moved that we set us, approve this letter and send the letter to the appropriate parties. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Chance. Okay, discussion now. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? None? That's Olelo. Olelo just voted. Thank you, Olelo. Thank you very much. Again, Cora, thank you very much. For those who may not know, and you, we've had our share, and we're still having our share of game rooms, especially in Leleha. One goes down, another one comes up. And really, there's no way to stop them. And I don't want to reiterate what was presented in the letter, which is very well written. So again, thank you, Cora. Motion is carried. And let's see. Spencer, who signs it? Do I sign it? As a chair of the Neighborhood Board 14? Can you take care of that and I'll come down and sign it?
Spencer, I made a few mistakes in spelling, so I'll, I'll correct that in the draft.
Okay, great. Thank you again, Cora. Thank you all. All right, moving right along. There is a, I guess, discussion about legalizing marijuana in Hawaii. I don't know if it's, there's a bill pending or whatever. I think I was read about it. They're gonna have discussion, I believe. Is that in the city or the state? The state, right? State, right? State, state, all right. I'll tell you, I, no. Do you know anything about that? Well, let me, let me do this. Let me do this. I think it's just a very simple question. Are we in favor of legalizing recreational marijuana in Hawaii? Right now, medicinal, the use of marijuana for medicinal, medicinal purposes is authorized, but not recreational marijuana. And the reason I know is I teach at the university and somebody, one of my kids says, and they're from the mainland, hey, can we smoke pot? And I said, no. So I'm, I'm gonna throw this out to our board. Do you want to take a stand on this or let it ride or, or what? I'll, I'll tell you what I did, and it's only personal. I wrote, I wrote a personal testimony in opposition and I sent it. And it's because I was in, anyway, I don't want to say, I don't want to influence you folks. But what's your druthers? Anybody? Do something, do nothing, let it ride, take a stand? Yes. You know, can you do me a favor? Can you come up to the mic, please? Yeah, and tell us your name and what it is you'd like to tell us. And thank you for coming, by the way.
Hi, I'm Margaret Lim from District 27. And I'm actually a candidate for House of Representatives in this upcoming election. Actually, tomorrow, there's a public hearing regarding that bill. And so I hope our current representative will be in opposition to that bill. I don't see any benefit of that bill to our community, to our district, or to our state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Want to testify? Board? Yes, Cora?
It's a fairly complicated issue with many, I think, many aspects to it. You know, including the marijuana that some of us grew up with is, is, you know, a lot weaker than what currently is on the street. And the question of what, you know, does it state tax? If it's legal, there's a state tax, it, and where do the proceeds go? That's one aspect. Is it a gateway drug? Is it not? One can also look at the experiences of other states that have, for many years, had it legalized. So I, you know, I, my personal feeling is that we should not take a stand as a board, but let it play out in the public forum and in the legislature. And, you know, as it develops, perhaps take a position, but for now.
Okay, any, anybody else on the board? Yes, Chance?
I would like to echo Board Member Yamamoto's, I guess, sentiments in regards to this too. I feel that we should write this out as well and let it continue to develop. Because for me, on my end, I would like to kind of see if, while they can legalize it, is it gonna be regulated as to what, you know, the different strengths or types or strains of marijuana that will be legalized or regulated? But I, I'd say as a board, we should write this out. And maybe in the future, we can come back and take a stand.
Thank you. Thanks. Anybody else? Yeah, Carol?
Just FYI, the bill that's being heard tomorrow is SB 3335.
That's the reason why I wanted to bring it up tonight, because it's gonna be on, testimonies due tomorrow or the hearings tomorrow. Just for information, legally speaking, here in Hawaii, marijuana is illegal, and possession of only three ounces, you will not be prosecuted. I don't know why three ounces. If you think what three ounces is, is it takes five ounces to make one teaspoon. So I don't know how, what that, because I know I teach the course and, you know, up in your age. But anybody, I'm gonna ask this question. Anybody on the board would like to take an action on behalf of the board or have the board take action? If not, my recommendation is if you feel in favor of it or against it, then you as an individual can go ahead and submit testimony. Any objections to that? Okay. And again, thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it. Okay, with that in mind, let's go to anybody from Malahia? St. Francis? Lanaquila?
Okay, Lana, everybody, uh, didn't, Rose. News is available over there. The main thing that they want to know is that the next show and sell is coming up Friday, February 23rd, from 8:00 AM to 10:30. Show and sell is basically like a, kind of like a craft fair, the way that the clubs make their money to do their activities and things. They'll, sewing club sews little things and sells them. The Portuguese club makes Portuguese bean soup and sells it. So, yeah, it's, it's a moneymaker for all of the different clubs. And it's very important for them as for their funding. So that's coming up. And then future dates. May 7th, August 8th, and October 23rd. One of the things that they wanted to mention is that if there are members who need transportation, there's a new program that allows, at COVID, when COVID hit, transportation kind of fell through and it was very hard to get transportation. But that has been, there's a new, a new way to do that. And so the number to call is 808-768-7600. And that's, it's an increased capacity for getting rides to and from the center for those who need it. Also, the Catholic Charities, which runs, has a contract to run, the Lanaquila Senior Center, is, has a grant and aid before the State House, State Legislature. And they are asking if you wanted to take some time and support them. They'd love, love support for that. They have, they've requested $175,000 for the center. And to give you an idea of the kind of things that they do, one of their classes, Stretch and Tone, so a little bit of exercise, they have 75 participants in each class and they meet twice a week. So the center is very busy. Some of the, they do still have in-person as well as online and hybrid classes. So if you know of anyone who is 60 or older and looking for either cultural or physical or craft or just time with, to spend learning and doing things. They also do a lot of excursions, which I really wish I could go. And this year is the 55th anniversary of Lanaquila Senior Center. And they are selling, they're making, they decided to have an anniversary celebration book with history about the, the center. And if you would like to, they're looking for sponsors. You can buy like an ad or photo space in the book so that it helps pay for the book. So call the center if you would like to be a part of that. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Let me just tell you that I'm very partial to the Lanaquila Senior Center. Being on the, I was on the Catholic Charity Board. That was my favorite charity. Now, the 55th anniversary, you said they're gonna make a book? And-
Yeah, they decided, the members decided they didn't want a big party. And so they're putting together this anniversary book. And so you can submit something and basically buy a space in the book. And that's gonna pay for the book. So it's $3 per photo.
How about if I, a donation? Can I just make a donation?
Yeah, you can just make a donation, of course.
Yeah, I mean-
Of course. In fact, they are working on continuing on Phase 3 of their water sprinkler project for the outside, and that was donated also.
So would they be sending out like a form for donation?
No, it's, it's, because they're, quote, this particular project is set up to be like, you buy ad space, like, congratulations, Lanaquila Senior Center. And you have, you know, in the, in the books you have that have pages of congratulations from this company or it's, it's a little less direct than just give us money.
Oh, okay. So, but actually, okay, I'll talk to you about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But this is for the 55th that-
Anniversary, yep. Celebration book. Yep.
Okay, thank you. I'll talk to you later about it. Any questions? Yes, who? Oh, Donald.
You know, this show and, yeah, I mean, show and sell?
Yes.
Would Lanaquila entertain that the board has a booth for informational purpose? So we can interact with our neighbors?
I don't know.
Can you find out?
I will ask. Yeah.
For us to get, you know, active in our community. And at the time of this meeting, it's very inconvenient for the seniors. So I'm thinking that if we can go out and present that the board has a booth, that they can come and talk to us for any type of problems they might have in our community.
Okay, I'll ask. And then are you, you're volunteering to be at the-
I volunteer.
Okay, because I'm working.
I volunteer.
All right.
Good idea. As a matter of fact, you remember many, many years ago when our council member, yes, she had- yes, she had loved Liliha, something like that? I love Liliha. Yeah, Corin, yeah. That was-- and everybody came to talk to us. Thank you. Good idea.
What I say, you know, we always talked about getting involved with the community and all that. And to me, this is one way for us to get involved. And any type of activity they would have, you know, we should have an information booth so, you know, we can listen to our neighbors and their complaints, and hopefully, we can resolve some of their problems.
Good idea. Very good idea. Anybody else? Any comments? Okay, moving right along. I think that should-- Iris, you have a question? Is that Iris? I see somebody's hand up. Who's that? Somebody have a question? Mistake.
Sorry, no, no, it's me. Sorry. Carol, what is the date and time of the show and sell?
So, the next one will be Friday, February 23rd, from 8:00 AM till 10:30.
Thank you.
And then, the one-- the immediately following one will be May 7th, same time, 8 to 10:30. For those who plan in advance.
Yes, okay.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, if not, anybody have any announcements before we adjourn? Okay, just two things.
Sir, sorry, for Liliha Library, Public Library, Senator Suzie Chan Oakley wanted me to tell you guys that the Liliha Public Library has increased its children's, young adults', and adult community workshops, and continues to grow. All but one staff position is finally filled, and they look forward to more programming in the future. If the Neighborhood Board would like a tour of the library, we can work with Senator Chan Oakley and Marissa, who now heads the library. I don't think that they're going to do another grand opening since COVID, but they will give the board a tour if the board would like a tour.
Wait a minute, Brandon. They're going to give us a tour, not an open house?
Yeah, I don't-- I think they're going to be kind of not doing that because it takes too much-- you know, too much to plan, like that extravagant type of open house. But they will do a private tour, though, for the Neighborhood Board.
Oh, I was looking for an open house with heavy poo-poos and drinks. Waiting on this time, but anyway, thank you for the invitation.
You're welcome. So, keep me posted, Wes, if you guys want to do a tour, and I can help arrange it with Senator Suzie Chan Oakley.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
We have somebody who wants to just make an announcement?
Sorry, I came late, and I'm Miss Number 4 on residents and community concern.
Sure, go ahead.
I recently started catching the bus, and I live up Puunui, so I travel all the way down Liliha Street. And I have noticed that Kunaui, Kunaui Lee, where that nail polish places, they have a lot of people that catch the bus there. And I also notice when they come back home coming up Liliha Street, a lot of people get off that bus stop that's on the Diamond Head side. And that's four lanes of Liliha Street, that's really wide. And people just cross when they feel like it, when the bus passes. I brought it up to the Neighborhood Watch, and they suggested, instead of putting a stoplight or a blinking yellow light when people want to cross, they should put a raised bump so people don't drive fast. And I was just-- I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you very much. We have our city representative sitting right there. He's taking notes. I know where that is. It's in Kunaui and Liliha, right?
Yes.
The bus stop there?
Yeah, and there's four lanes.
Yeah.
And it's really wide. So, I don't notice as many people catching the bus going downtown, but I do know that a lot of people get off the bus coming up.
And they cross the street.
They cross the street.
Is there a crosswalk there?
There is.
There is?
And that's the same problem that by St. Francis Hospital?
Yes.
That's the same problem that they have there. There's like a big rest bus stop.
Yes.
So, a lot of people catch the bus going to town.
Yeah.
And when people come back home coming up, they just walk behind the bus and cross.
Okay.
And so, I was wondering if they could put another raised crosswalk somewhere near there? Because it's hard to see people coming off the bus and if they're going to cross or not.
Okay. Why don't we do that? I'm going to-- I'll put that on the agenda, and I'll leave it for the city representative. He's got it. So, basically, it's Kunaui and Liliha. That's what you're concerned. Okay. You got it?
The St. Francis Hospital. They don't have any speed bump or slow down bump there. They do have a crosswalk, and people just walk across the street.
Okay.
And I go up and down that street a lot.
Very good. Well, thank you very much for sharing it with us.
I also had a question of how many cars can one person own? Well, okay, so this street that I live on, everybody has their own garage, so everybody parking their own garage. But then, there are neighbors that has like seven cars. So, he parks on our street where all of us park in our garage, and probably his cars are on our street.
You know what I'm going to do? I'm going to put our city representative, if he knows the answer. I have the same problem. My neighbor's got seven kids, and each of the guys has a car. He parks, and they park along the street, but now they--
On our street, not--
Oh, okay.
You know, it's a public street.
Oh, we're going to get you an answer if we can right now. Go ahead. I think to answer your first question, I can own as many cars as I can afford.
You know, unfortunately, there's no parking control arrangements right now. It is a public street. The one thing the city-- you can do a complaint on the city is if there are cars doing car share, things like that, you can report those. We will investigate them. We will take those away. But for private-owned vehicles, currently, nothing. I think there's been different investigations on different things that the city has considered, you know, some kind of permit parking, and limiting the number of stalls in there. Slowly gaining traction, but not a ton of traction behind those actions.
Carol?
What we do in our area is you have to move your car within 48 hours. You can't just leave it forever and ever. And we find a lot of people park their cars because we have a little bit more space than around the corner. They park their cars that they don't really want, and they leave them there. So, after about two and a half weeks or so, I report them as abandoned vehicles. And then, they get tagged, and some of them get towed, and some of them get moved to another corner on somebody else's street.
He knows what to do. That's much we can do. That comes from the official answer. But anyway, good luck. Anybody else? Any other announcements? Okay, if not, yes.
You know that raised crosswalk? I'm more against a raised crosswalk because of the safety issue. So, can the city look into something that would beat their requirements about alerting drivers who are going across the crosswalk, vice, a speed bump or a raised crosswalk?
Well, generally, the-- before we take any action on any roadway, we do do a traffic study to analyze what the right traffic calming measure is would be appropriate. You know, for example, we had those raised crosswalks coming down Pali, but it was making too much noise for the neighbors. Every time this car was up and down, it was just making a lot of noise. People couldn't go to sleep at night. Same thing in the mornings and things like that. So, I mean, there are appropriate measures. We did get the trajectory and the soaps a little bit better, but different intersections based on the required different solution. So, that would be part of it. We wouldn't go straight to a speed table or anything like that. It would be specific to what they're seeing, the traffic engineers are seeing in that area. So, without that, I'm ready.
What I'm going to do is I'll put it on the agenda. I'm going to leave it to the city to remedy the issue. So, thank you very much. All right, anything, anybody else for announcements? Any last minute? Okay, if not, I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. As a matter of fact, we have 100% attendance for our Neighborhood Board, and I'm sorry, this is more than an hour. Don't hold your breath, guys. Yeah, right. And I want to thank our audience for coming, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Everybody's-- moved by Dale, seconded by Chance. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, any opposed? Meeting adjourned, and the time is now 8:12. Thank you very much, everybody.